Orders, ordinance number three zero zero three is on the third and final reading approving the City of Alliance's annual appropriation bill for fiscal review in October first, twenty twenty five. The proposed budget contains anticipated and estimated revenues and expenses for the next fiscal year. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number three zero three.
Second.
Here we have a motion and second deserving discussion.
One more discussion?
Yeah.
My name is Dennis, I'm thirteen sixteen two down. So last night, somebody handed me the line item that I've been for twenty five, twenty six. And it appears to me that there's an awful lot of stuff in there that can't be cut out of the budget that doesn't need to take place in the next fiscal year. Uh, the number one thing would be the decreshaping of the old power plant. I think it is wise, instead of requesting money that you're not entitled to, above the needs of the city's needs, to start a process on something that may or may not be a viable option for the new police fire department, from my understanding. Maybe we can put that off a year and budget into the, reminding that it's allotted to the city to grow. I can't really understand, that would definitely shift from a budget deficit to a budget surplus. I'm sure if that's the case, and there turns out to be a five, six hundred thousand dollars surplus, you guys are trying to figure out how to spend it, maybe we can just allot that to the next fiscal year budget and compensate for that and start a process that I own property right across the street of it. It is provided, it has been sitting there for forty years and nobody's done anything. There's gotta be other options that are being considered than that for the facility. Uh, I just wouldn't highly recommend that maybe that gets looked at again. Seems to me that that's one thing that would take care of this whole budget situation without placing the burden onto the taxpayers, the city of lines. Thanks.
Mayor, may I address that?
Yes, you may.
So, that is coming from an entirely different fund and it's not impacted in any way, shape, or form by the property tax. It comes from the electric fund tax. That building has been vacant for over forty years. It's an attractive nuisance. You can tell by the amount of pigeon leavings and dead pigeons that are in that building, plus the people that have been into tag it, that it, something needs to be done. Prior to being able to do anything with that building, whether it's reuse, or selling it, or tearing it down, uh, the biggest issue is the asbestos. We all know that asbestos works great. It's just not a health, uh, thing that we can allow. And so that decommissioning is for the, the payment of the asbestos and it is paid for out of the electric fund.
So that may can't be shifted?
It cannot.
At all?
It is a enterprise fund that's specifically for that. Uh, it was for the generation of power and so it only makes sense for it to be paid for out of the electric fund. We are also looking for grants to help offset that cost and hopefully we can lessen the amount of impact to the electric.
Okay, so I didn't understand that. It's a lot of time to actually go through, but it seemed like a very reasonable viable option to cancel it. Um, so that being said. Just pause it. It's a terrible thought. I had, not sorry. In any case, I don't think it's the right thing to do, as you guys are doing. I don't know if it's happened in the past as far as a council vote, which I see the legislature mandating two percent early. I just don't think that's a route with the city of lines to be taken to push anything, especially what, what is the shortfall, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars addition? That we're requesting an additional property tax?
Well, there's, there's several reasons, yes, that we, we talked about last night. There's, uh, we had to ship property tax back to the airport because we don't have the reserves anymore for that. That was the two hundred and sixty thousand. We lost a hundred thousand dollars in grant funds for the transit, the void. We have an increase in minimum wage, which creates a compression, which raises, which forces stories higher than other people's, uh, salaries as well, so that, you know, they're not being paid less than somebody that just gets hired at minimum wage. So there's, there's several things that are, it's, it's much more than the two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
And so we, we cut some, cut some areas.
That's the problem with the additional.
Additional, over the, oh, the, the amount over the, the statutory limit is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that's the amount that we're asking in addition to the statutory.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know you did express last night that you put it up in department heads to try to tighten the belt again. It doesn't appear to me from the line items that I left in the hundred and nineteen page report that I had, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars shouldn't be back to offset without doing what you're doing. I mean, if I had more time to look at it, I don't know who, is that the one that sits down and is lined by a line and crosses out cuts?
I am, yes.
Okay. I would have liked to have had time to visit with you this afternoon, but I guess it is what it is. You guys have been making decisions and there's not really anything that the city of lines can do, except, except the fact that our elected officials cannot live within their budgetary constraints. It's allotted by the state of Nebraska. Granted, they did give you a means in the process that you're going through to do that, but has anybody shown up spoken in favor of doing this?
I read a letter from Randy Wagner, the former CFO for the city, who said that he felt that he didn't want to see any of the services that we were preserving, not even for the, 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 so that, that was, that was one.
You know, it just seems like there was a lot of lines there to, are substantial amounts of money that could be re-let down. I know you're under the time constraint. I just hope that that isn't the reason to not reevaluate what you're doing. Cause like I expressed last night, you say it's ten percent. I must have missed this part when you expressed that it's ten percent, but all the money cards that I had show roughly sixteen percent.
Okay, so the ten percent is the amount of dollars that we're asking over and above what we received last year. And how it falls on each individual homeowner depends on what the assessor did with their, their values. Since values went up in general, our actual levy is only going up six percent. So some, some properties didn't go up in value. I know mine probably like yours went up ten percent. I know what, I think the assessor, they have a blanket adjustment to a lot of properties and add a ten percent to their assessed value, cause mine also is going up to sixty percent. The six percent levy plus the ten percent of the assessor tack on to the value of mine.
It just seems like it places an awful lot of burden on the people that do pay the taxes. You know, a lot of people give up their rent because that's the only option, you know, their responsibility, where the picture of houses that are good and those are houses that nobody would want to move their family here like seven, into these types of homes because they need a massive amount of work. And then you gotta jump through these hoops to go to the business program to get there. Who coming in as a rubber roller, taking a conductor's job, that needs to move their family and their kids here, relocate them to our school system? This, we don't want to take on that kind of responsibility with a redoubt home or not upgraded, not knowing how long they're gonna be here. And with the risk that if they do do something with it, their property taxes will be doubled because of valuation things. I mean, it's just, after I left here last night, it, it really is a constructive place to go down and talk to fellow business owners and think the topics that I really wish I had addressed last night, this probably isn't the place for it, but, you know, it happens. I mean, I'm trying to figure out, you know, the best example would be the Vitale's fire. Why was that business allowed to leave the city of lines?
I'm telling you specifically why. They, they left because they weren't allowed to purchase the property, they weren't to purchase the property after the fire, um, before they were able to reinvest and rebuild it. And the FAA controls that, that area because that's, that's all old airbase land and the FAA would not allow us to sell the land, but it still, the land has got the same, no, he wasn't.
Mayor, I would suggest that we're gearing off the course.
That, that, yeah, we, we should just sit down, thank you. We should just.
I just really wish you guys to reconsider it. I know the time constraint is there, it's everybody with the entire budget. I just, my biggest problem is, is if you do this increase above your allotted amount, the next year, you're still allowed a three percent increase on top of the ten percent, sixty percent, is really what it is. And so, I mean, that's all the way down the line. It's not like you're ever gonna get that back. You're just increasing your money this year and then your three percent next year is based on the sixteen percent increase this year. It just never ends. I mean, I don't ever see why property values have to continue to fly, so we don't have to make hard decisions.
We, we don't control property values, yes. You know, I tried to address that last night and we decided it was a county issue.
It is a city. But we're directly tied to it as a city because we are a part of the levy.
I know, but we have no control.
No, we don't, but if the city can find other ways to reduce that, maybe they can decrease that levy, decrease property values. I know every person who's saying it at Nebraska is correct, the property taxes. We've just seen it being increased on our property taxes with the last valuation. And now you guys wanna tack on to that again. It's only gonna upset a lot of people with this job.
Actually, I, I had, I understand.
It's very frustrating that we can't live within our means. Thanks.
She will walk for ten thirty one three ladder. I apologize if I asked something that was answered last night, but your cameras didn't function, so that we weren't able to watch what was going on. Um, one of the things I, I'm asking about is what is the alternative power source that you want a half a million dollars for?
Um, there's been a plan for many, for many years. Our only source of power comes from Waka, that comes in on the, on the western side of town. If for some reason Waka wasn't able to deliver, uh, power to us, we would be without any power. And so we're, uh, been researching what another way that we can receive power and, and the method that we're, we are, have decided to use is, is to build transformers, or a transformer with a generator.
Generator.
Uh, that would then kick on the way a household generator would kick on if, if the city power went off in winter now. And so rather than building a line from another source, uh, that Waka has, we would, we actually have a generator to, to supply power to it. It just provides a backup and that all comes out of the electric fund. It doesn't come out of property taxes.
So do I, understanding currently that this half a million dollars is not for building this transformer or generator?
It'd be different.
It's just, just for plans to do it?
That, that's right.
Half a million dollars just for plans?
So typically you take ten to twelve percent for engineering costs and we anticipate it to be at least five million dollars per state.
But again, that comes out of the electric, don't you? It doesn't come out of property taxes.
Well, okay.
And it would be spread out over many years. It, it would be something we would, we would buy it and spend all that money in one year. We would probably do a bond issue or some minimal loan in order to pay for that, but we'd be paid power over many years.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything. I'm, I'm really, truly honestly questioning. I keep hearing it comes from this fund or this fund, but ultimately, all of those funds come from us.
No, well, yeah, but in different ways. Like the electric fund, that's, that's, um, that money comes from the electric bill that you, you pay on a monthly basis. Uh, and the water bill and those things, those funds are serviced out of that. And then the general fund is serviced out of property taxes, sales taxes, and those types of things.
Okay, I, I'm gonna pile all that up here.
Sure.
My next question is about the airport layout plan. What are you trying to do there?
We have to do that for the FAA to maintain our certification at the airport, be able to develop a layout plan for them so that they know how we're operating that.
How is that, how can that change after the last nine hundred years? No, I mean, we, we have an airport out there, the railways are in the same.
Uh, it's, it's, it's all determined by the federal government. We don't have any control over it. So it's, it's what the federal government tells us we have to do.
So if nothing's changed, why can't you just send a blast one, not oyster and?
Cause that's not, that is not what they're looking for, updated airport layout.
Their, that's also paid for ninety percent by grant from the federal government.
Yeah, the FAA actually pays ninety percent of the cost. We only have to put ten percent.
Okay. And the next thing is the playground equipment.
That's primarily coming out of parka funds and the grants that we received, so, um, very little that's coming out of, out of property taxes. And that's been on the plans. We are hoping to have it done this year, but unfortunately, um, the, the people operating the grant didn't have their eyes on prostitutes quick enough for us to get the equipment ordered this year, so it's gonna have to wait this year.
And the last thing I would ask about is replacement control vehicles. Could those be staggered rather than done all at the same time?
This is staggering number.
Yeah, this is only doing four. This is only doing two, three, threes at this point, doing three, three vehicles. So we are staggering it, we'll do, hopefully a few each year as we rotate with it.
Okay, so three vehicles. Do, I think I might remember the chief saying that he only had twelve officers?
That's correct. There, we have full strength.
So they weren't all on duty at the same time? I'm, I'm confused about why the need for that many vehicles.
We developed a plan under the previous chief where we don't pot seat the vehicles. In other words, we don't have the, the vehicles there at the station and the next policeman coming on shift take it over in that same vehicle, because that creates wear and tear on vehicles. I'm, I'm gonna defer to Chief Levitt to make sure I'm, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, we have a take home car program. We've had it since before I got here, um, a previous department, we had a take home car program, had a car program for twenty years. Um, the reason the take home car program works so well, and it's even more important than I think in a smaller department, is because if, I'll, I'll, you, not picking out Chief X nine, but I'll use Shatter as an example. They've got three people per shift and they've only got like three mark control cars. They run twenty-four seven. And when they have an emergency, they have to call people in, there's nothing for those officers to drive. And when things break down, there's nothing for those officers to drive. When people have to go out of time for training, there's nothing for those, so it becomes an issue. So if I run a car twenty-four seven, it'll, I'll blow it up in two to three years. By assigning the cars to the officers, A, they have all their equipment, a lot of equipment the police officers carry, compared to when I was a rookie twenty-four years ago, it was exponential what it used to be. So they have all their gear in their car and they have their car in their house. Um, so going back and forth, that creates visibility. If they go to the gym and take their car, which we personally do, or whatever, um, that creates visibility. And most importantly, when we have a major incident, which fortunately we did once in a while in the lines, when I call people in, they have a car to drive to respond to whatever the incident is. Um, as for, as far as why we're buying three cars, I'm still trying to catch up to get the fleet where it needs to be, because nobody bought cars for a long time. The cars they bought were already shot, but they bought them, uh, under the previous administration in the cases. And so half my fleet still now has well over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it, so we're trying to catch up. Um, I'm trying to buy two to three cars every year, over the season.
Does that help you?
What did that?
Did that help?
It did. There, there were some things I had to consider, if you can, cause I appreciate the answer.
When Sheila's done, I asked you back, you explained what cuts you did to fit this budget to work back. I think that's an important topic for everybody to understand.
But, let's see if Sheila's done.
I just. I just want to say, we really, truly need, we need to look harder for some ways to reduce spending rather than bring this increase, cause this increase isn't equal, it is a building block for more increases, is what I'm saying. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate you, that's wonderful. So in regards to the budget, this year was nothing compared to last year. Last year, I think I took the budget down, I wanna say it was about two hundred thousand dollars from what it was the prior year. And then this year, what we did is we looked at every one of our accounts. Police department has a lot of larger budgets, you know, police department as far as the number of, uh, public categories, you can see the percentage of the GLs. We have a pretty complex, pretty involved budget and what we did was, uh, my secretary and I, we literally looked at every single one of our categories and there were some that we kinda ran out of money, that we actually had to increase, but there was also a lot of categories across the board, uh, that we increased. And we also eliminated a lot of programs that we just weren't using, um, from, before I got here, I'll just say that, um, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that we were spending on, um, AI programs that we just don't use and things like that. So, um, I have cut everywhere that I think that I can cut and still run, um, a police department that's operating the twenty-first century. Running a police department is very expensive, it's always going to be. For example, every car that we buy, whether I buy a new, used, or however I get it to equip it to be a police car, tack out another thirty thousand dollars, because you've got radar, you've got a laptop, you've got a printer, you've got the partition, you've got the lights, the sirens, um, shotgun rack, all that stuff, and it really adds up. It's about thirty thousand dollars on top of whatever I take for a week.
What did you do with your national power budget this year?
So we are authorized, we're authorized officially for eighteen positions right now, including our gentleman who just started the training academy, we are at thirteen. So knowing that we don't anticipate being able to hire five officers in one year, we gave a couple of those positions back for the time being to help the city maintain their budget. And I agree with you.
I mean, it's important for the public to realize that we did make a cut. You have a tough budget here.
Um, I would agree, we made cuts. Last year, we made a lot of cuts. And this year, as we all know, in discussion with us, if we cut any more, we're gonna have to reduce services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Tom Roder, uh, seven twenty-three Emerson. She covered most of the stuff I was gonna ask, but I just got a couple other questions. Um, okay, on your five hundred dollars for your design and alternate power system, isn't there a generator out by the new Pizza Hut out here on, there by the, uh, that hotel out there?
There, there it is. It serves.
Is that functional?
It is. It serves the downtown corridor.
Okay.
So you'll see a lot of people on Third Street that still have a light on, the rest of us are out.
Right, so you were talking about another generator, what, uh, or alternate system? So it'd be another one like that at another place that, um?
Uh, hopefully eventually everywhere that we have a substation, because that's the, the section of the system that serves the, the wide area.
That's, that, uh, solved that question. Okay, then a three point, uh, three billion on the airport lighting, uh, what lighting are, we talked about, the safety lights for airplane landing or what are we talking about?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay.
And we're fortunate that, actually, I think we just got the grant paperwork for that this morning.
You're gonna get a grant on it?
And it's a hundred percent grant, which is much better than we usually get, because it's ninety percent.
And what, kinda convert them to LED so they're more sustainable, last, longer lifetime lasting?
They'll be converting it, they'll also be running new wire, um, just because the existing wire is low pass.
Yeah, golfers love them too.
Yeah.
Okay, that solved everything. Thank you.
Runway lights is out.
Yeah, runway lights.
Runway light.
Well, thank you for your time, my name is Andrew Shires, I'm at the Bala and Metall York Avenue, and I've been resident of Alliance for ten years. And I'm here to speak against about this proposed budget and the proposed increase in property taxes to cover this budget. Last night I attended the meeting and I heard the city manager mentioned a zero-based budgeting process. I went back to my property taxes from beginning tax year twenty twenty-one, and so this proposed budget, and for me, is an eighty-two percent increase in those taxes over those four tax years. I don't see how that's zero-based budget.
Are you looking at your, your total tax bill, Mr. Shires, or just the city portion?
Just the city portion of the property tax.
There's no way it's gone up through, or, unless the value of your house has gone up substantially.
I'm, I'm just talking about the property taxes, the cities.
Okay, if, if, if the assessor has increased the value of your house, we can't control that, but our levy has not gone up more than three percent a year until this year.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at not assessed value, but what the city has taken for property taxes. I can show you twenty twenty-one, if you can look at your proposed budget, that's an eighty-two percent increase.
Over that time, or? Did your assessed value change over those four years?
That also means that you got more tax, right?
Not necessarily. It might be what, it went from your, from your particular property, but we can't control what the assessor does with the value of your property.
I'm not referring to the, the assessment act. I'm referring to what?
But your?
Property tax that paid to the city.
Just the city portion? I'm just trying to explain that our levy, we've lived within the three percent statutory limit for years. And so that levy has not gone up more than three percent. So if your taxes have gone up more than that amount, it's because your assessed value has also gone up. And, and we can't control that. We, that, and we work off the total dollars that we receive, not off the levy, so the levy doesn't go three percent necessarily. The levy might actually go down if the assessed value goes up.
My fault.
Yeah, but, so, I, I'm just trying to explain that we could not be responsible for a eight percent increase in your property tax over four years, just by our levy. Cannot be. And I'd be happy to sit down and go through, through.
Well, I, my pink card indicates, again, the estimated tax or the proposed budget compared to last year, this is sixteen and a half percent increase. I can argue with that.
No, I, I know that, that's because the assessor increased everybody by ten percent this year.
And if I go back through previous years, I can show you each year what percent went up. I'm telling you over this period of four years from the tax year twenty twenty-one, how much has gone up. I think it's irresponsible. I'm asking you to take another two weeks to have, or so, to find places to cut what we might want versus what we need. Now, Mr. Mayor, last night you asked for suggestions on what to cut. In my view, that's what we have representatives, so they, and we, individual citizens don't have to delve into the weeds, try to figure out what's a responsible budget, what we need versus what we want, and how to keep that within a reasonable amount. Sixteen and a half percent, property tax increase, I don't know how you can argue that's a reasonable amount, versus even a twenty-two percent overall increase in the city's budget. Is that sustainable?
I, I can't, can't disprove you. I, I don't wanna go through this again either.
And you asked for a suggestion. Proposed budget, if I read it correctly, uh, offers a, a general fund transfers to the golf course, what happened though? Same thing you asked, where does it start? Maybe just there, looking at semi-golf course, it's a luxury. It's expensive, look, look, if we're dumping a half a million of the general fund just to transfer it over to the golf course. I don't mean pick up a golf course, but that's an obvious, in my view, that's an obvious I don't mean to pick up a golf course, but that's an obvious, in my view, that's an obvious chunk of money. Sure, it brings in revenue. Certainly don't bring in the revenue to cover the costs. I have plenty of other ideas I would like the city to cover. That would be better suited in my interest, but we can't afford everything. Now, assuming they're a private entity, entity, and the golf course is a viable business, a private entity could do as well of a job running a place without the city. Having to develop funds to cover the cost of it. And if private entity could open a bar out there, bring in some more revenue. But I'm urging counsel, I'm begging the counsel, spend some more time, the average October 1st, right? Spend some more time looking for places. Check that, because 22% overall increase is just not responsible. And that's why we have you folks who are paying measly amount of money to try to find ways of meeting the city's needs. Determining what wants are our primary wants. And cutting the ones that we don't. You cannot sustain what you're asking, what you're proposing. So I'm asking you to table a matter, have another special meeting, have to find some ways of cutting the budget, cutting the proposed budget, because you can't, you can't do this. It is, it is. I just look at the census, some census information. Our city's not growing in population. And the largest group of people living up in poverty are the elderly, there's about 20, 25% of the minority are living in poverty. Under the poverty line. And this isn't public number one, aren't you? So that's what I have a request. I'm asking you to vote now on the proposed budget, or vote to table it. Have another special meeting in a couple of weeks, see what you can do, bring out that, I think, for your time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
What's that?
Can I ask the gentleman a question? The 22% increase in the budget, are you talking about the capital improvement projects, is that included in that?
I believe that's part of the cap, for the golf course?
No, you had made the comment that we had increased budget by 22%, and I was wondering if that included our capital improvement projects?
I believe that includes everything, yes.
Okay.
16, in my view, for my taxes, 16.5% of that was property taxes. Increase. The rest becoming from other sources.
Okay, so the large increase in our budget this year was for capital improvement projects. Because last year we did.
We didn't make street projects.
We did no street projects. We pushed a bunch of capital improvement projects. So I just wanted you to know that those are, where they partly increased in the budget was, is because we're doing capital improvement projects.
And those are out of the enterprise lines, like electric, the electric department, the water department, the street department, which aren't impacted by property tax at all. Those are all paid for, have those, out of user fees for, so. It's, it's a difficult budget to understand. I understand what you're saying.
Well, is it accurate to say that the proposed budget increase, proposed increase in electrical rates and the refuse?
Yes, yeah, we proved those in the meetings.
So increasing property taxes, increasing electrical rates, increasing refuse collection rates. It adds up to a significant amount of money, a significant percentage of increase.
The last two years, our, our cost of power has increased 9% in the year, the last two years. Last year, we cut our electric rates by 5%. This year, we approved a 9% increase. So our cost has gone up 18%. The customer's cost has gone up a net of 5% over that, over that two-year period, because you got a 5% cut last year. So, you know, that's, it's difficult to see and people don't see a cut in their electric rate. You know, they just see hopefully a little bit of lower bill, but, but I just, you know, to give some context on the electric rate increase, the, we actually did a 5% decrease last year, even though our cost went up 9%. And it's one of the other 9% issues. And again, that doesn't impact property tax call at all, that's all. Anyone else?
Hi, Josh Tussell, 912 Colorado. First, let me say, thank you guys. It's hard. Today, I spent a day, I was time losing, an entire day training. A coworker group, and utilizing facility there. It's amazing facility, great, great, but. Thing that I tried to donate to them, because they don't take money for that, which I guess they're, they're close to something. There's the opportunity of, of small, I'm just kidding, that's the only shit costs. Anyway, long story short, I don't want to get down on what it is on higher level. Do you know percentage wise, what was spent, what was spent? Just, just, I know offense for the officers, alone here. But what we're looking at spending, both the, the tax.
Oh, for the police department, you mean all of them dispatched, or others?
Yeah, I kind of completely dispatched and, and they have a fire team.
Is this just for payroll, or?
Everything.
For the entire department?
Yeah, the entire department, all that.
Yeah.
Which, I'm. Road map, Josh, 2.7. Police operations, it's 22, change, and please add when it's 56.
And dispatch, dispatch. Yeah, so. What I wanted to say.
It's close to 44, right?
Someone smaller, a smaller town, you're around higher percentage, because that's just how it works, you know?
Yeah.
Plus surrounding, things like that, but we're sitting in a, with this proposal, 44% of our spending is going to public station. That's incredible. That's our primary responsibility. I understand that, but I also understand that, you know, cities of our size are running 30 to 38%. We're, we're far above that. Parking, recreational, we're proposing 13%. Should be somewhere between 8% compared to these other places. One of, one of the issues that I think this may have places, that the government has to face is, there's no point. Like, if you have people who are growing a city, if they're in jobs, they're, unless they're elderly, firing, things of that nature, I don't see this working. I would, like these guys have said, go back over and dig into the numbers and literally put them up against areas our size. You know, I compared to Kansas, Idaho, Iowa, similar size, 8,000, 8,000, 10,000 population. It's, it's, it's not the same, you know, like, I would save me some, which I understand, that's a thing we care about, but it's out of spending, it's out of control. And I think has, has an entire, the entire atmosphere of public service, or municipalities spend, which was COVID, and everybody was spending 121, 223. When we look at our budget, again, year to year, it just gets on this rapid rate. And I understand we can ban people more, which will have to, which is a poor decision on the state's behalf. So, you guys can fix that, but. I just really like you guys to compare some of these numbers to areas our size. Also, we have businesses, they're in the, which are a damn hard people. I mean, what happened to my life was terrible. If you have 40 people, I got 40 jobs in the city, nothing. And it turns out it's kind of nice to cover up, that direction. So, they would, I thought it, brought it up, that way, you know? That's what I just like to say, just at a higher level, your numbers, your percentages pay up. Public safety, I understand they're taking all the responsibilities that was around, that's a good thing. But on the other hand, it is costly, you know? I'm not gonna go charge, charge somebody $10 for something that costs $20. I personally try to give a lot of my time, and I have a ton of my time in the city for a while, and a couple of jobs. So labor bills, you guys cover the parks and it's fine, but the spending is out of control. Like I said, the job, on the major, things of that nature, parts of the operation, and public safety. So that's all I got. All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Hello, everyone. I'm off spoke last night. I did give me a more. I'm not gonna cover any of that. I know she went over, she knows a lot about it. I'm just waiting from just the revenue portion of it. I know we're kind of off the record, we're not completely, but. Worked out there for six years, former employee out there in public service, the front also. My opinion, the spending out there is ridiculous. They got escalators, they don't fuse. They got the second burn box out there that serves really no purpose. They were going anyways. We had big fire out there. We took care of it. Fire department came out there. We did all this, everything of it. Went through, did the survey on everything. It's always been a money pit out there. We're always losing money out there. Just is what it is. When I first started out there, tried to fix 30 years worth of it locked out there, really, was what ended up being. We did the surveys on it, got it all taken care of, lined up everything we went there, re-furished that higher hill with a couple more trash. I understand H and H has been out there. They create a lot, they bring a lot of trash, a lot of trash. But Troy and Ralph have been really good to us. They take care of us really well. They pick up our dumpster. You know, there's a lot of things that are benefit from H and H. We raise these costs, yes, I get it. They bring a lot of stuff, they make a lot of space. We're gonna have to potentially do it ourselves. Part of it, talking about, we've been talking about that for years, right? Have implants, same thing with the Baylor, have implants. H and H writes some checks for us. We're gonna lose it. They're gonna take it to Okaloa, we're gonna move that. Our income on there is gonna be going up. People are gonna want to beg. We don't get a lot of services anyways. The dumpsters are falling apart, the alleys are falling apart. I mean, you gotta beg people to get a new dumpster. It just is what it is. I don't know anything else about it, and all the other stuff I'm talking about, but raising the prices out there. We really gotta look at that upon our spending. Do we really need that escalator? There's tires out there for that loader that we just, that was supposed to be in the budget, and then we just ended up buying them out of the blue. They weren't supposed to be bought. The conveyor breaks down. The Baylor broke down. We're buying all this stuff, really, nearly going to AMX. We don't, we don't have a plan for this. Here we go. I understand the Baylor. I completely understand. We need it to make fails, right? Camp Lees still up there, so you're gonna need equipment. We're buying equipment outright. We might as well be leasing the equipment, and four years later, clean it up and get new one. We're putting a lot of responsibility on, or we're putting a lot, throwing a lot of money at the landfill, where we're gonna be moving a lot of the landfill. I mean, it's just, the sale is one thing. I know it's gonna be like, what, a million and a half, I think is what they want for that sale, for lying and everything. We start losing business from H and H, all of them, to Okaloa. I mean, I get it, it's, it's, but we've worked really hard on burying that, other than till I left. It's not looking much better than what I'm thinking. So that's all I wanted to say, just like that, so.
On the radio staff, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Hi. So my name is Jessica Musler. I've been on this here for about.
And your address, please.
Oh, 912 Colorado. I've been on this here for 16 years, so I'm not a lifer. I came last night. I come to a few other ones, and I sit back and I'm quiet. But I listen and I watch. And I hear the people, the people that put you in the seats that you're in. And you hold great power. You hold authority over our city. You have the right. You have the decision in your hand to be able to say, okay, reasonably, everyone that has come here, has come here pleading, pleading for you guys to heed the warnings. Right? You guys were all elected, am I correct?
Oh, no. Yeah, I've got it.
I wasn't, I should have.
Just, Mr. Yates, wasn't what he was to do?
By the people.
No, he was appointed to develop a vacancy, so he, he.
No, I understand that. I'm asking.
We were, we threw a lot.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, we threw a lot.
By the people.
Right, yes.
The people have come forward, except for the one alleged letter. Everyone else has come forward and pleaded with you. They've said this community cannot handle this burden. You can make a difference. You can make a change and say, okay, let's go ahead and table this. Let's bring in some people from the community that have kept this community together and kept it going and moving forward. And by inch maybe, but it's still here. Bring this all together. Three minds versus a whole community has got to be able to come up with some answers. Table this. Will you table this?
That's, gotta be up for a vote here, a little bit. Right now, we're just having a discussion on what we want to accomplish.
I hope that you listen to the community, to the people, the taxpayers that put you where you are. Please, heed their voices. I was in the grocery store today. Three people, how many do you think were sitting there on calculators because they didn't know what they could afford when they got up to the front of that grocery line? And they didn't want the embarrassment of not being able to have enough money to pay for their groceries. Or probably too proud to go get on any kind of assistance. That's where you're pushing the community. And I hope, I hope that you go with what's right. Do what's right. Take some time. Heed this, table this. Because if not, this community is, it's not gonna stand. And I would pray to God that he brings a changing with the gods with the votes. Because if you don't heed this whole city, the people that were willing to come up here and speak their mind, knowing you guys aren't gonna listen anyways, you're gonna just do what you wanna do. Because that's been the general consensus, at least that's what's fallen on my ears. But they still came, they still showed up. One alleged letter that agrees with this. And I mean, how committed are you? Talking about budget cuts, would you be willing to sit in your seat without payment? That's commitment, that's dedication. Would you still serve this community if there wasn't a dollar attached to it? I would. I appreciate that, and I hope that you vote accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I leave a second?
I would see if there's any questions.
I'm Alex Jones, I operate 236 something, and I'm currently operating the businesses that operate out of 212 and 214. So, when those people that are not to come up here and talk, they already know that this is a done deal. I already know there's a standard, we're obviously in a timeline, that no matter what we say, this is actually gonna be a voted through. And it sucks because my grants were cut this year too. I operate 912. My grants were cut harder. And it sucks because my grants were cut this year too. I operate my company. My grants were cut harder than mine. But I have contracts that say that I can't keep that on the backs of the people that I serve. And you guys took shortcuts in your brains and you put on the backs of the citizens of this town. While we are giving money to the golf course that half the citizens of this town can't even afford to be. That is a luxury. That is a commodity. That is unnecessary. If I mishandled my budget and missed on my work with fire, that would be what happened. Yet, we're supposed to sit here and accept the fact that we're just having our taxes increased. So unlike some of the citizens in this town, others have it happen, but when I went home to find them, just like I have three of them. Two of them for my business and one of them for my work. And to shoulder the burden of the property taxes that are increasing because the budget is in balance and it is wasting. There are plenty of departments that are wasteful condition. Do we agree to that?
I not only agree to that, Misses Duncan.
Okay, so.
Because, because I trust the department heads and local authorities, but you're free to disagree.
Okay, so we agree to disagree.
Sure.
As we start to like look at this, we're looking at our homes as if there's dollar signs on your businesses attached. But to no one here are our homes, nor does this family. They're where we raised our children, or I started my business that required me to purchase another business in this town that has given absolutely no kickback, something here. Like, to continue to operate a business in this town in comparison to other places makes no sense. You're not making it so people my age want to save you. You're making it so we have to sit there and go, what the hell are you going to turn this for this time? Now, and all I would wish for is you guys were required to listen to this lawsuit, that's a statute. I wish you guys would have actually listened and decided to take some of that contract, you asked for it, you'd be willing to cut, and then you didn't let us answer. There are plenty of people about places that we would be willing to cut. There were plenty of people in that meeting last night who discussed their fixed income, who can't afford the golf course. There are places to true this budget. You guys just pushed this, and not you guys, sorry that I overdidalized in person there. But this was pushed to a point where there's two weeks to get it done now. And there's no real time to work. It should have never been brought to us when we had two weeks, so there's nothing that can actually be done. Because at the end of this, this property taxes are going to get pushed through. It's already funded. And that's, that sucks for all of us in this town.
Is there anyone wishing to speak? Cusman Baxner has a secret she wants to read.
A gentleman last, a gentleman said last night that being in our city council should not be the popularity contest. And he is right, especially when hard decisions like this have to be made. I do not like increases, and this is a very unpopular issue. But I am on the city council because I am strong enough to do what is needed for the interest of the city and the services that we provide. I heard several times last night that the council needs to decide what is a want versus a need. Our enterprise funds such as electric, trash, water, and sewer are our basic needs. They are necessary and everyday aspect of our daily lives, and these funds have to finance themselves to pay for operations and improvements. The electric department has done an outstanding job of staying ahead of problems with preventable maintenance, such as pool replacement and the pursuing of an alternative power source. Public Works knows that half the sewer and the water lines in this town are over a hundred years old. To dig up and replace lines understretched is costly and inefficient. Alternatives have been pursued to increase longevity of our infrastructure in a budget-conscious manner. Department heads are the experts in their fields for us. We are a community that relies upon them for their knowledge and their expertise, and we appreciate their experience. Now, many of the things that are paid by the general fund through your property taxes could be viewed as wants. They all bring a level of value to our community, but not everyone uses them. Many of us have never used the fire department thankfully, but their value is easily seen. I haven't used the golf course in a decade, but it provides value to our high school and middle school students who use it as a sports activity. The day the golfers and visitors throw in thousands of rounds each season find value. I don't use the pool, but my son does, and it provides employment for my daughter. I don't use the senior center for meals or social activities, but my dad does. I use and love the library. I'm very passionate about the library. Does that mean only something that I use or something that he personally use has value and should be funded? No, I don't believe so. What I will support is not more important than what you will support. Together, these examples, along with many others that I did highlight, such as museums, car henge, bike path, many other ones, work to provide a well-rounded, beautiful, and safe community that I am proud to work for. They all work for the betterment of our lives and allow for joy. I did not come to this decision regarding an increase of the tax levy likelihoods, and I do not have all the answers. The only thing I do know for sure is that I need and want all of you at our budget workshops. Because that budget workshop is where we find solutions to our problems. We can find common ground by having conversations and working together. And we're going to start having those budget workshops early this spring. This is both an educational process and decide what is valuable and important for everybody in our community. I ask that you please come to work with us to help us find solutions that are sustaining for our community. Thank you.
I'll just add, I, I would echo what yours has said. Raising taxes is not a decision for us. We went through two or three budget workshops. This is the third reading of this budget. It isn't the first reading, it isn't the last second thing. And in the first two readings, I read out explanations of what was involved in the budget, and what was, what was detailed in the budget, and what was driving it. And so, I think a great amount of thought has gone into why this is necessary this year. Our department's heads have gone through their budgets very carefully to make sure that what they're doing is what's necessary or what they're purpose. But we have a city that has an awful lot. There was reference to the parks departments and, and the size of the budget for parks department, but look at all that is included in that, not just the parks themselves. It also includes night museums, salvage museum that includes the ball field complex. And so, it's, not every community has those things that we have. And that wasn't a decision of this council to have those things, those are the things that we're now responsible for. So, it just, it, it hurts me to ask for this increase because I know it has an impact on people, and I definitely heard, especially the seniors last night that are on the big stage come explain that this is going to have an impact on them, because it isn't the only thing that's increasing for them or for me or for any of you. You know, our grocery bills are going up, our, our cost of fuel sometimes goes up, it's been kind of stable lately, but the cost of about everything has, has gone up, so I am definitely sensitive to it. I have heard the comments. I don't know that there's anything that we can do in this year's budget to avoid the increases that we're going to, we're going to ask for. But I echo what Mr. Mashburn said, that we need to involve at the, at the budget workshop level in the future so that we can hear your voices then, as we, as we develop the budget. And you, those things are always published in the newspaper. They're open, just like these meetings are open. And your input is allowed, just as there are these meetings, so I just, just wanted to say that. Is there any other discussion for the public? The council? Vote, please, call the roll.
Councilman Yates?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mashburn?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't have the.
That's all right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-five dash one two four, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed tax levy request. President?
Formulates in favor of the motion on the ordinance had been received. There have been more than three quarters of the council present the motion as declared pass. I'm sorry, passive adoption warrants number three thousand three, having been confirmed by the three of all members elected to council, I declare the pass adopted and forwarded. My apologies. This is my responsibility.
Resolution twenty-five dash one two four will accept and approve the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six property tax request, which contains anticipated and estimated revenues and expenses for the next fiscal year. And as unpopular as it is, but as needed as it is, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash one two four.
So, here. There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Give the public. Vote, please, call the roll.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mashburn?
Yes.
Councilman Yates?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
File item on the agenda today is Resolution number twenty-five dash one twenty-five, Fraternal Order of Police Contract Approval. Resolution number twenty-five dash one twenty-five will approve fraternal order of police with the city for fiscal year twenty-six through fiscal year twenty-eight, as those negotiations were recently completed. The FOP has voted to ratify the terms, which are now pending city council approval. I would make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty-five dash one twenty-five to approve the FOP contract.
Second. There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Mashburn?
Yes.
Councilman Yates?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you all for your advice.